Six twenty twenty meeting of the Radnor Township Planning Commission. And as always, we'll open with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we, the next item on the agenda, of course, is the minutes of the September eighth twenty twenty meeting. Does anybody have any corrections, changes, additions, edits, et cetera, to the minutes of the September eighth twenty twenty meeting? Not hearing any edits or suggestions or changes. I would ask that somebody make a motion to approve the minutes, please.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Don't be bashful. Is there a second? Two seconds, okay.
I did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the proposed zoning amendment for emergency generators. I think if Nick is here and his client is here. There he is. There's Steve.
I seem to be having some difficulties tonight. Sorry about that.
Everybody have an issue with taking two oh eight North Aberdeen Avenue next? Nick?
Yeah, I'm here. Kind of.
You ready to go?
Yeah, I'm here. I am, but I'm not getting a picture, but if you guys don't mind not seeing me. I'm presentable, it's just not showing up, it looks like, on the screen.
Well, we could be the judge of that, but of course, we can't see you.
I don't know why. I have no idea.
You want to try and get yourself, but all of the people that you need to put on your...
They're here. Christie's on, Patrick's on, everybody else is here is...
Okay, now, at the bottom of your screen, there's a start video. You see that down there on the bottom of your screen someplace? Should be on the left-hand side.
Yeah, I've done that, but it's not... Did you see it's like showing some kind of funky?
Yeah, it's a cyber link.
I mean, I can, you know, I'll log out and log back in again. I hate to lose our spot there.
How long is that going to take?
A minute, I hope, thirty seconds.
Okay, do that. Let's see what happens because... Hello, Dave, how you doing? Dave? Do you have your auto yawn?
I have no idea why it's doing that.
That's all right. We can, we can, we can work through this, can't we?
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem.
If you want to see Christie and Patrick anyway, I don't think I'm important to be seen on this.
Okay, well, let's get started with your, your two oh eight North Aberdeen Avenue matter. Preliminary land development.
Okay, so you've seen this plan before. This is based on the, you know, the amendment for the North Aberdeen Avenue area. It is, everything here would be conditioned upon that approval. Currently, we have a public hearing before the township scheduled for October twenty six for the approval. This plan has been reviewed by the township staff based assuming that approval is granted. Also, of course, the applicant has paid the professional services agreement, so they paid all the fees required for the review based on that approval as well. This is basically a six-townhouse development on one lot, is less than one acre. Again, I believe you've seen pretty much everything, and unless you want me to go into a little more detail on the plan itself, I'll start with the review letters, John, unless you want to have maybe Patrick chime in a little bit on what the plan looks like and maybe Ian can pull it up.
Nick, I have a dumb question.
I hear you, Matt.
We unanimously approved two ten about a year ago. I think it was six townhomes then, too.
Right.
This is not, these, this is not another six-townhome, right?
No.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Just had to ask it.
Exact same plan.
Well, Nick, what, if anything, has changed between what we reviewed and found acceptable, such that we could recommend it, and today?
Nothing. Nothing's changed. This is the plan. This is actually the land development plan, which, of course, we're required to present and receive the planning commission's recommendation and then the approval from the Board of Commissioners. But nothing has changed from what you have seen previously regarding this. None of really the comments are an issue. The only thing we would like to be considered is as a preliminary final plan rather than just a preliminary plan. And everything else, I think we can work through pretty much all the other issues. We do need, the waiver we would need, of course, anytime you ask for preliminary final, you need a waiver for that. The typical five-hundred-foot plan requirement, and Patrick's attached the aerial, which is commonly used in order to, rather than go through each particular property with their, with our man-made improvements. And I believe there was one more waiver we may need, which was minor. I think that's it. I think it was just those two.
So it's a waiver for the, to make this a preliminary final?
Correct.
And the five-hundred feet?
And the five-hundred feet.
Okay.
And Roger, did I miss something? I'm sorry. Did I miss another waiver? Are they the only, I believe that they would be the only two.
I think that's it. I'm flipping through the letter quickly here, but I think they were the only ones.
And anything, any staff recommendations or requirements, I should say, they're all will comply?
Yeah. We went through them today, and I don't believe there were any issues on any of them. For example, they wanted perspective sketches of the buildings being proposed. It's basically encouraged and we'll provide them anyway. The MPDES, we, our understanding is, since it's less than one acre, we do not have to go to Delaware County Conservation District with it. They wouldn't even review the plan. Those were the comments from Roger. I think Patrick kind of confirmed that, I think with Roger, saying that Delaware County Conservation District wouldn't even review the plan if it's less than one acre. The street trees won't comply with that. There's only, right now, there's only two street trees. Seven are required. We'll fit them in, you know, they'll be skinny, you know, because we only have approximately two-hundred feet of frontage, and the code requires to retreat to nearly thirty feet. So we can do it if the township so desires. And I think...
If I could just add to that, if, from an aesthetic standpoint, or for the health of the trees, if that's an issue, there is a fee in lieu of that the developer can pay. So we want you to put as many trees up as you can, but we want it to be done right. So if it's too many, you have the option to do the fee in lieu of, it's five hundred dollars per tree. That goes strictly to the shade tree fund, nowhere else to reuse, to replant trees. And if I could, Nick, while you're talking, Ian, if you could just bring up a couple sheets, just, I think it's important that everybody sees the development. I know we're moving well on this. Ian, if you could just pop up, go up a few sheets, please.
And Nick, can you please tell me what that five-hundred, that five-hundred feet was referenced to?
Yeah, there's, in the code, on Roger's letter, page two, number two, under subdivision land development, the code says, existing principal buildings and their respective uses and driveways on the adjacent peripheral street, sewer lines, storm drains, culverts, bridges, utility easements, quarries, railroads, and other significant man-made features within five-hundred feet of and within the site. This includes properties across streets must be shown on the plan. And Roger comments, the applicant provided an aerial of five-hundred feet. And then if all the requirements of this section will not be on the plan, a waiver must be requested, which we need to be requested because the aerial does show all the improvements, but technically it does not comply with the SALDO provision.
Okay. And also, was it this deal that there was a discussion about the setbacks and how that relates to the existing other properties in the immediate area?
Yeah, I think what we're doing here is, remember, we are adding five parking spaces off-street. Or on-street, I should say. We're providing five additional, in addition to the requirement, we're providing five additional spaces on-street, and basically they're for the neighbors. So what we're doing is we're bringing the curb in closer to the, to the building so that we can provide those five on-street parking spaces.
Got it. So Ian, if you could zoom in a little bit, please? Just a tad? So, that's perfect. So on the right-hand side of the page, in front of the units, that gray area, Dave, that's, that's the additional five parking spaces, that was the change of the one word.
Okay. In the zoning. And so they're going to have, what, two parking spaces in the rear of each building as well?
Correct.
Okay.
That driveway is, doesn't go all the way through, is that correct? That goes behind these buildings?
Yes, Patrick, can you describe that out there?
That is, yeah, that is correct. So you'd come in on the south side of the property and sweep behind the buildings access to the garages.
Fire chief seen this plan?
No, so we'll be bringing this to our staff. We just received four other land development plans, so we're going to do this next week. I was just going to send Trish an email saying we have to set this up. We will let Radnor Fire take a look at this.
So where's ingress egress to these, to the parking spaces in the back of each building? I'm actually looking at the aerial right now.
On the south, I guess it'd be the south of the site.
Yeah, on the south side of, are you talking about the existing conditions or the proposed conditions?
The proposed condition, so how do I get, how can I get back to park in the back of their buildings?
There's a driveway on the south side of the site.
On the bottom of the page where it's gray, Ian, if you could just scroll up here, bring it up a little bit, please, just scroll, I mean, no, same page, but just, if you could go back, yeah. So David, at the bottom of the page, Ian, just zoom out one click, I'm sorry. At the, and, yeah, that's perfect. So David, at the bottom of the page, there's a gray area, that's the driveway in, that takes you back to the cartway, and then you'll see the, the driveways into the garages in the back of the buildings.
That's some impervious surface that's behind the, behind the residences where the, and behind the driveways, it appears. Is that a stone or what is that?
That's the underground stormwater system.
Okay, it's a stormwater system. Okay, thanks. Okay.
One comment on that driveway Damon brought up on page two of his comments was, number five talked about widening the driveway. It complies with both the SALDO and with general principles, but Damon suggested that we widen it a little more. I think, Patrick, we can, right now, it's sixteen feet. I think we can get a little bit wider, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, correct. So see, we can get it to sixteen and a half or seventeen. We have to leave room for a fence and a curb. So what I, whatever I need for that, we'll make the, we'll widen the driveway up to that point.
Yeah, my concern on that was, the sixteen-foot width is usually, it's unconstrained a little bit when we have a driveway of sixteen feet. It means you can possibly go over into the grass a little bit. When you don't have that, and you have the driveway right against the building and also a curb line, you're now constraining two cars within that area, and that's a very tight area to be able to get two cars by each other. So widen it maybe another foot or two would definitely be a big improvement.
And Nick, did you say you're going before the commissioners with this plan on October twenty-sixth? Is that what you said?
No. Well, whenever Steve or whoever gets it before the commissioners, the ordinance itself is basically up for approval on October twenty-sixth.
Right, so what we were thinking...
Okay, thanks.
We would wait to bring the land development plan, we would wait till that meeting.
Yeah, because I'm sure they're going to say, what are we looking at? What are we approving here? And now we can show the land development plan saying, this is what you're approving. Because there's always some concern that we're, that someone's going to play games once they get the ordinance approved, but this exactly fits with what we've been saying all along, as far as what the land development plan would indicate based on the ordinance.
And if we recommend that this be a preliminary final, this is the last time we'll see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and John, if I can add, I had conversations with Patrick today concerning the comments in my letter, and again, we went down the list and they were all, will comply, as Nick mentioned. And I believe the goal will be to resubmit this plan with the proper revisions before it goes in front of the commissioners, so that we have a clean letter. And if that is the case, or an all but approval letter from the consultants, there's no reason to really come back and go through the process again, because everything would have been addressed.
Can I take it that the staff doesn't have an issue with a waiver of the five-hundred-foot requirement?
No, since there are minimal off-site improvements, I don't have an objection to that.
Yeah, that's a pretty common waiver request.
Questions or comments from the members of the commission?
Hey, John, can I jump in and ask a question of Nick? Might be a little bit of a curveball to you. Nick, this is Will, Will Eddinger, standing in for Mary Everly tonight. Nick, I'm looking at the, your title insurance policy, Schedule B two.
I don't, let me see. You probably have that there, right? Christie Flynn?
Sorry, I'll see if I can pull it up.
Sorry.
What does it say?
I know I'm, I know I'm throwing you a curveball. So there's, on items nine through twelve, there are restrictions from, you know, it's deed book W seven, page one twelve, but it doesn't say what the restrictions are. There's also a court ordered easement, and I'll leave the pages, the book and page number. There's a supplemental final order and judgment as supremacist A. So there's three items on there that I don't see described anywhere else in the title search. I mean, I'm not saying there are going to be major problems, but if you had any idea what they were, again, I'm in Schedule B, part two of your title insurance.
Well, I can send the associated deed, deed book and pages over for you to take a look at.
Okay.
From memory, from when that report was reviewed a while back, I think the restriction is no drinking establishments.
Okay.
So we're, we're clear on that. And I think everything else was, again, of no concern, but I don't remember the specifics. And I can get them over to you.
Okay, I mean, I would just ask, just subject to those, like, a recommendation be subject to those easements, and if they're not an issue, they're not an issue. I just kind of didn't want to go in blind.
No problem.
Christie, I guess it didn't like the idea of having another McCurry's bar across the street.
McCurry's, no more. That's right.
There's a, there's a blast in the past, McCurry's. Any other comments by any members of the commission? I also must have, we should ask for public comment. Steve, are you aware of any emails that have been sent in? Steve, where'd you go? I lost Steve.
Remember, we did have neighbors' meetings on this, and the neighborhood's all positive about it.
Right. I just want to make sure that there isn't somebody who has asked some sort of a question, and we just, we don't want to ignore them. Steve, why is he, you guys, his video, or I mean, is, why is he muted? I mean, I understand the way this is supposed to work on these Zoom calls. Oh, Steve, is there any, any emails from any members of the public?
I was just going to say, no. For the record, we have received zero emails from the public for this.
Okay, fine. Well, I think that we've found that this plan was okay in the past. I'm not sure that there's any reason why we can't find it, find it approved now. Again, sort of gilding the lily, I suppose, but if everybody agrees, could I have a motion that we recommend approval of this, oh, two things, that we recommend waiver of the five-hundred-foot requirement, and that we recommend waiver of, and that we, we treat this as a preliminary final plan and recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners? Does everybody, if that, if that's agreeable to everyone?
Contingent upon satisfying the letters of the consultants.
Yes.
And I was going to say, also contingent on the passage of the ordinance, and I brought up the easement items, but I'll leave that to your discretion.
Well, I'm not sure how we can make a recommendation regarding easement items. It's a, it's a title issue. I don't think that we can deal with that.
Yeah, I just think...
If they can't clear the title, then they're not going to be able to do what they want to do here.
Right, as long as the, the plan doesn't need to change for some title issue, but okay.
If it changes for a title issue, that's going to have to come back here.
Right. Okay.
And we'll see it again.
So could...
I don't think we should get involved with that.
Okay.
So just for everybody, so for Trish, recommending approval of the waiver, the five-hundred-foot map, recommend approval of preliminary final, recommend approval of the plan contingent on complying with the review letters, contingent on the zoning ordinance, the C-three amendment passing, and should we add contingent on clearing up the title issue?
I'm not tied to that. If...
I think we should, I don't think that's in our brief. I mean, I don't see that as a subdivision or land use issue, it's a title issue. It's another animal altogether, so I would leave it alone. Obviously, if they can't clear the title, clear these easements, and they're not going to be able to do this plan, at least not as it's presently constituted. Am I wrong? I'm looking at the staff here for guidance, am I wrong about that?
I agree, I just think it should be documented, so it's not lost.
Okay, all right. And contingent on clearing the three issues in the title report, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now...
Just, you know, to chime in, kind of John was, I think, on the same track. Remember, neither the Board of Commissioners nor this board nor the zoning hearing board can rule on title issues. Entirely separate, but again...
Nick, we require you to have clear title, so it shouldn't be an issue, right?
Well, I think, I think what I would say is, clear title is a little bit, like, for example, I don't plan to quiet the limit to the drinking establishments. I plan to let it live there. I'm not, it doesn't matter for, for what the use is. So I think maybe subject to the professional satisfaction that the plan can be executed with the title exceptions in place or removal of those exceptions. But like I said, I don't, I don't want to have to pursue some title action for something that doesn't matter.
No, I think that sounds good.
Yeah.
I think we should not mention it. It's a needless complicating, complication.
All right, then I'm going to rely on Will that when this plan comes around again to review the title.
Yeah, I think that has to be done. I don't really think that we should be making some... We should be making some, anything contingent on clearing title because there may be things that, as Christie has pointed out, that don't have to be cleared, and if you wanted to clear them, would be an expense, but it doesn't have any real effect on what they're planning to do. I just, I'm very uncomfortable getting involved with that, to tell you the truth.
Okay, so Will, I'm just going to ask you, when this comes back for preliminary final, to make sure that falls under you to go to check. I just don't want it to fall by the wayside. If there's an issue, we address it. If there isn't an issue, fine.
Yeah, I'll send a memo to John for when it comes up to the, to the board.
Thank you.
I'll get that info over to you, Will.
Now, for purposes of moving forward...
Go down to the third one, Steve. Five-hundred-foot plan, five-hundred...
The motion in front of you is, if it's seconded, recommend approval, recommend approval of the waiver of the five-hundred-foot mapping requirement, recommend moving forward as preliminary final, contingent on compliance with the review letters, contingent on the zoning, the board, the commission recommends approval.
Can I interrupt, please? I am getting an email, I'm getting a bunch of emails now on public comment. One person said that he sent earlier today, sent an email, I did not receive it. So I just asked him to resend it. In the meantime, I just got another public comment.
So Trish, I'm not getting them, you're going to have to read them aloud or forward them to me, however you wish, because I'm not getting them.
I'll forward that. John, are you getting them?
The format was for them to go to Steve, I believe.
Yeah, they're not coming through. They're not coming through to me.
Double-check my phone, but I'll...
This just came in at seven twenty-nine from...
Okay, I'll read the first one. We are, we are neighbors on two oh eight North Aberdeen. We are neighbors on the two oh eight North Aberdeen plan and sent questions that are not planning meeting right now and cannot believe they're saying there's no questions. We have not received any, so we sent this to John Lord during the meeting, and we are very upset that they are saying there's no questions. I have no emails coming in, so here we go. Here we go. It's a long list, so, hello, I own and live at two oh seven North Aberdeen and would like the following questions asked and answered during the hearing tonight regarding the six-town homes proposed for two oh eight North Aberdeen. One, what is the anticipated start date of construction? If you want to take them one at a time.
Let's do it one at a time. Do you have an anticipated start date?
We would expect to start ideally in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one. We have obviously a couple more steps with the zoning and the plan approvals, and then we would move forward.
How long will the construction take place? That's number two.
I'd expect these homes to take about eight months to start to finish for construction.
What are the daily hours of construction? What are the daily hours of construction?
I think the township restrictions are 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Am I right, Steve?
It's either 7:00 AM to 9:00 or 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but they are, the townships require, they are the maximum hours you're allowed to work along with no, no activity on Sundays. I think they're actually asking, what, what do you think, Kristi, you will be working, understanding you have that option, what would the normal hours be?
More typically contractors tend to work from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. That would be a typical day for the contractors on the site.
Where will the, number four, where, where will the construction vehicles park?
The construction vehicles will park on-site or we will identify an off-site parking spot for them depending on the access available at the time of the particular trade that's happening.
Where will, number five, where will the construction dumpster be located?
On the site. I don't have a specific location.
Will there be any construction vehicles parked on the street daily or overnight?
It would not be my expectation that they would park overnight, but potentially they could legally park on the street in front of the, the site.
I'll tell you, no, they can't park there overnight, but yes, they can legally park during the day. How will the construction impede traffic?
I think that we are obviously going to have to do our best to limit the, the traffic disruption in this area. I don't believe we have utilities that need a bunch of work through the street, but there may be some requirements for tie-ins in the street and Patrick might be able to help me more with how that would need to be handled.
All right, so there is some, the sanitary lines would have to go, go out into the street and the water lines. The electric lines, we could run down the curb.
So we may need to have flagging for short periods while we make those connections.
So just while we're on that topic, so North Aberdeen is going to be paved this week, so.
Promise.
That's what they tell me. So you'll have to figure, so when, when that occurs and it's no fault of yours that your development's coming in after that, so we'll, we'll require most likely full width milling and paving of the affected areas. So there's no patchwork. So we'll note that on the plan.
Super.
Okay, here's number seven. Now that was seven, eight. How will the construction and increase of residents impact parking on North Aberdeen?
Well, I think we touched on it a little bit earlier. Each home is going to have a two-car garage integral to the building and then parking for guests in the driveways behind those garages. And then we are bumping the curb line into the site, which is essentially a widening, widening of the street to create a parking bay for five parallel parking spaces on North Aberdeen. The parking on that stretch of the street is a challenge. Now, it does create site distance problems, so we are really, I think, excited to offer this new improvement to the scenario that is currently in place.
Number nine, how often will the streets be cleaned due to the increase of dirt and debris from construction vehicles entering local roads?
We, we obviously have to keep the streets clean. We have careful erosion control measures on the site and we schedule typically weekly street sweeping around the site like this.
So I can tell our residents, we have a zero tolerance policy on this. So our inspector, we will have an inspector on site every day, so we will be on top of that. Number 10, will the on-street parking on North Aberdeen be changed during and after construction?
Well, after construction, we will have those bays available and they will be safer and traffic will flow better after construction. During construction, as I said, we, we, there's going to be interim conditions where the street is under construction and then, of course, that once it's complete, we'd have additional parking available.
How will the construct, number 11, how will the construction of the infrastructure affect local residents, i.e. water lines, electric sewer?
I don't have any reason to believe that there would be any disruption associated with those connections.
Number 12. Speed hump be installed on the north, on North Aberdeen around the construction area?
I'm not proposing a speed hump, no.
And just for our residents, so for a speed hump to be installed anywhere on a township street that goes through the Board of Commissioners, so it starts at staff traffic. Then at that point, a petition is, has to be taken through the neighborhood with a certain percentage agreeing, and then that would go to the Board of Commissioners. 13, when will we see a rendering of the townhouses?
I'll have that prepared to present to the Board of Commissioners.
Number 14, what are the total number of floors for the townhouses?
The townhomes that we're proposing are going to have garages that are below the first floor. So they're sort of basement rear garages. The first floor and then a second floor. First floor would have the kitchen and main living spaces, second floor would be bedrooms. And then we are imagining these have peaked roofs and I've shown images of similar homes during some of the zoning ordinance hearings. But a peaked roof with a third floor space in the eaves, so much like I'm sitting in my house and you can see my third floor, I'm down the street, you can see the eaves here, again, in the peaked roof, not a third floor flat roof, but, but a, a gable.
Number 15, what are the number of floors seen on North Aberdeen per townhome?
It would be, from North Aberdeen, it would be two floors, so the front door would be a couple of steps up from the sidewalk and then the second floor and then a peaked roof. So it'll look like a two-story house from Aberdeen.
Number 16, will there be roof access roof patio to the townhomes?
We have offered those in other places where we've done a, a flat roof out of the back in a sort of a dormer condition. We have not determined whether we would offer that as an option in this, in this community.
Number 17, what is the anticipated price point of the townhomes?
Hard to say right now. Prices are strong. We would think they would be in the sevens and eights to start would be a, an initial guess.
Number 18, what are their next steps in this process?
We talked about that a bit, so we need the ordinance hearing that's happening on October 26th and then we would ask the Commissioners for preliminary slash final plan approval of this plan.
Number 19, and I will answer this one. So what if the answers are unsatisfactory to the residents, homeowners of North Aberdeen that the construction affects? What can we do? So first off, I would urge any resident that has any concern, pro or con against the development, to show up at our next public meetings. The zoning meeting is the 26th. Following that will be Board of Commissioners if they get zoning approval. But also need to know that from a staff standpoint, and when I say staff, that's myself and our consultants, Damon and Roger, we can only review this through the ordinance and that's the subdivision land development ordinance, the zoning ordinance and the stormwater management ordinance. So as long as it falls within there, there's something we can address. If it is out, outside of those areas, we can, we don't have that ability. But I would say to give me a call tomorrow if these answers are not satisfactory to you and we can discuss them, but that, so Trish, that ends that email.
Could I add one, could I add one thing to your comment on that last comment? I think that I would be happy, we are neighbors. I live on North Aberdeen, so I am that person's neighbor. And I'd be happy, Steve, if you forwarded them my contact information so that I could answer the stuff in much more depth. I can drop, drop off some 11 by 17 plans so that they can touch them and feel them and have them in their hands. So if you just want to shoot them my email and phone number, I'd be happy to, to respond to them.
We will do that.
I can do that. And Steve, that was the only, that's the only one I got.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, that is the only email we got.
Okay. So we have a pending motion or, well, we have, we have the, the language for the motion. Could I have a?
Can, can, I just have a question, John?
Sure.
Not to complicate things, but is it that we are making any motions on something that isn't allowed yet? Isn't an ordinance have to be passed?
I think it's subject.
I think our motion is that, is, is, it's within the motion of recommending approval that it is contingent otherwise, I guess we'd have to wait until the ordinance gets passed and then they have to come back and see us and go through this process.
But the Commissioners have to pass the ordinance?
Correct. If the Commissioners elect not to pass this ordinance for whatever reason, then this project is not going to happen.
But they, they would.
It's not in its present state.
They would pass the ordinance in the form it is now, that last we reviewed it, right?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions from anybody? Lane, Elizabeth?
Good, thank you.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we approve the plan. Steve, if you could be kind enough to read off that list, which you.
Sure. Planning Commission recommends approval with, of the waiver of the 500-foot mapping requirement. Planning Commission recommends moving forward as a preliminary final plan. All recommendations are contingent on complying with consultant review letters as well as the Board of Commissioners passing the required zoning.
As Steve said.
The motion has been made. Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Looks like that's unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you all.
Okay, and you're welcome. Now, moving on to the next item, which is the proposed zoning amendment regarding emergency generators. I would, I would ask either Steve, I guess, Mr. Narcini or any, any member of the staff, just to give us a little bit of background as to why this ordinance is felt to be muted.
So I'm going to pass this off to Will real quickly. So our zoning officer is unable to attend tonight, so Will can answer. So this was brought to staff by Commissioners with a concern for where generators go in the township and how it affects other neighbors, other residents. So this ordinance was crafted, it was brought to the Township Board of Supervi, Board of Commissioners and they, as it has to go, it's going to go through Planning Commission. So from there, I will turn it over to Will for any of the very specific items within the ordinance.
Yeah, so what you're looking at is a zoning ordinance that was prepared by Kevin Kachansky. This was originally contemplated as a zoning ordinance and I'll get into some of the critiques as that John Rice pointed out in his memo that came from the Board of Commissioners, but this was originally conceived as a zoning ordinance because the concern was people have these generators either charging or when there's a power outage running, you know, maybe right up against the property lines and that can cause problems with neighbors, with the noise, you know, with encroachments. So the purpose here is really to clear up whether these generators are, you know, accessory structures and that they're being placed in, within required yards. But, so that's why this is presented to you as a zoning ordinance. Yeah, yeah, it puts some restrictions on times for the charging of the generators. So it's a pretty standard zoning ordinance. I mean, it almost reads like just a regular residential or just accessory structure zoning ordinance. In your packets, John Rice wrote a memo to Kevin Kachansky and to Mary, who couldn't be here tonight. And he outlined six items that he, that the Board of Commissioners wanted to have addressed. I would almost look at them as like a review letter or an action letter for the Planning Commission to review. So I can address these one by one, but I would suggest that we start at number two.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep, so number two is a discussion of an administrative waiver process. So the, the one problem that the Board of Commissioners wanted to address was that if we have this as a zoning ordinance and somebody wants to maybe encroach a foot into their side yard or in, you know, maybe they don't have enough room to put a generator in, they're going to have to go through a variance process. By the letter of the law, in a variance process, honestly, you should probably never get a variance for a generator because it's not going to be an undue hardship that you don't have your generator if the power goes out. It's, it's almost the definition of just a standard hardship. So, you know, by the strict letter of the law, you're not going to get your variance. I'm not saying they'll never be granted, but take that for what it's worth, but the Board's concern was, do we want to be sending these property owners to the zoning hearing board, maybe with some regularity for generators? You can't create an administrative waiver process around a zoning ordinance. You can't evade the variance process to the zoning hearing board without, just as a zoning ordinance. So the suggestion that we brought up with Kevin was maybe we do this as a standalone ordinance. We just take it out of zoning and allow for administrative approval. You can still keep the zoning parameters in there and say you still can't have one within 10 feet of a property line, but maybe you don't want the zoning hearing board to be inundated with these applications. So that's one suggestion. You know, if there is an issue of an appeal where somebody doesn't like the, the administrative decision that they receive, we could maybe tie it into the UCC Board of Appeals, the Township's Construction Code Board of Appeals. So, and that's really, I mean, I think that's kind of a threshold issue is, should we have this in zoning or should we have this as a standalone ordinance? So I, I mean, before I go too far, I'd like to hear the Commission's feedback on that.
One thing that's good by having a standalone ordinance, then it makes it, I think, a lot, an awful lot easier for the residents to find and review and understand what they have to do in order to comply. We had, something like this came up and we had a, some, it didn't really go anywhere, but a discussion regarding lighting and lighting ordinance. Matt spent an awful lot of time working on that. And one of the issues that came up there was, well, do we want to tear everything out of the existing ordinances and put them all in one place or just tweak what's already there? Luckily, we never had to make any decisions on that particular point. But here, I think that, I think this, to my way of thinking, this makes sense. Everything is here. It's just, if somebody wants to look it up, they can't say, well, I didn't understand that because, you know, I didn't look at ordinance number 2927, line 900, and I missed it, you know? So that's my thoughts regarding having it as a standalone ordinance.
Also, and I also like it as an administrative review.
Also, and I also like it as an administrative review instead of having to go through the full process because I think everybody slammed with a full process anyway, and that's very discouraging to have people follow the rules if the process becomes just so lengthy and arduous for something that many, many people are doing today. So I'd rather it be done by many people the correct way than skirting it. So let's make it easy, straightforward, and just a practical way to go about something that most people are doing today.
Yes. Yeah, and if you had to go through a more arduous process, I mean, I can see a situation where, you know, neighbor A is given that variance. Well, then, if that, most of the houses on the block are more or less the same. I mean, how are you going to deny the next person or the next person and the next person? I mean, it's, this is just a much better arrangement than making...
I do have one question, though. The portable generators, even though they're not, you know, standby permanent generators, we still have to make sure that they're going to be within the setbacks, too. I mean, you pull your generator out of your garage for a few days, you still have to keep it in a proximity within your yard as the one that's hooked up permanently. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, and that's, I think, one of the virtues of doing it as a standalone ordinance is that if you have somebody come through with a portable, well, they're just going to put it there where they need to have it for the duration of a storm, maybe, and then they're just going to move it out. And what, what are you going to do as terms of a zoning ordinance? And put an enforcement action against them? And then that takes 60 days to get going anyway. I mean, it just makes, to me, it makes more sense as a standalone ordinance, but I think you're going to want to regulate, yes, the portable as well as the permanent structure.
Okay. Can I just make one suggestion? Actually, I agree with everyone's comments, and I like this document. The only thing, I'm actually reading, I've reread 280-115.6, section A. Can someone explain that? Or maybe some, if this is going to be a document everyone's going to be referred to, and, and I, at least in my neighborhood, everyone but everyone is buying these generators due to the weather that we've been experiencing past. But if somehow that language be clarified a little bit, or at least you can explain it to me, what that means.
Yeah, I'll let Steve jump in if I'm not getting this quite right. But it can't be, so it means that the generators can't be placed basically closer to the street than the front of the house. So they can't be in your front yard. They've got to be in your side or in your rear yard. But the reason we put it that way was because you could have these corner lot situations where you, it's not really your front yard, you've got two front yards. So what we're talking about is actually the right of way to the public, not, I don't want to demarcate it by a name of a yard, rather proximity to the street.
Okay. And then with section B, the setback, setback is from where?
These are from property lines.
Property lines, okay.
I have a question. Sorry, Matt, Dave, were you done?
Yes.
Okay. On, I think it's on the second page, yes, item E, capital A. The last sentence says, and this is referring to generators that are permanently wired into load centers, so it's a permanent generator, obviously, it's not a portable. And it says, "Such generators shall require a permit with inspections for..." So where, what? I'm a little mystified by this. I mean, how many inspections? Annual, semi-annual? Who's going to conduct the inspections? What's the fee?
The township uses a third-party electrical inspector. So I think they put that there because there may be a inspection of the transfer switch that's in the house and the wiring along with that, and then there may be an inspection of the generator and its connection itself. I wouldn't, my recommendation is not to get hung up on that. The inspections are whatever required by those codes and our third-party inspector.
Hey, Steve, the, there's different classes of generators. The generators used in nursing homes, and we have a few, are inspected, have to be inspected, and they have to, they have a different type of testing cycle. So I think that, that language protects that, protects that issue. Like, there's a class A and a class B. Class A is in your house, class B is in the nursing home.
They're referencing the electric code, the Uniform Construction Code, so it sounds like it's a lot of the construction items up front that would be required.
Shouldn't there also be something that addresses the natural gas? Because as I understand, most of these generators are fed by natural gas.
Yeah, I think, Dave, again, I wouldn't get hung up on this. The Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code, underwriters' laboratories, and manufacturer's specifications. So I think our, if it's not, there's going to be an electrical inspection no matter what because it's feeding to, it's coming from a transfer switch and back into the house. And if it's gas, then our inspectors take care of that.
Okay.
So the inspection that they're talking about, the permit and the inspection that they're talking about is what is ordinarily be required for any type of an electrical gas device that's being hooked into the house and put in, and into the electric.
Yes, that is correct.
You are correct.
I read it the first time. I thought, they talking an annual inspection? Got to charge to get some little sticker slapped on the side of the...
I wouldn't get hung up on that.
What the question is to us? I mean, we're not dealing with inspections and construction.
Right. I wouldn't get hung up on this.
I wouldn't either. What is the question to us? It's a separate ordinance, and it's a location?
I didn't hear your question, Steve.
What is the question to us? The location, and it's a separate ordinance? Is that it?
That was the initial question, but I think John followed up with a question on item E on...
I just want some clarification on what that inspection regimen was all about. It's just a confirmation that you need a permit, and it's got to be inspected to make sure it complies with township, other township ordinances regarding these matters, electric connections, gas connections, et cetera, which we're not concerned about. It's just a clarification that I now see belongs in an ordinance, a proposed ordinance such as this one.
Yeah.
So we're being asked tonight to, whether or not we would recommend to the commissioners, I'm sorry, does this go to the commissioners now or to the zoning hearing board? Who gets this next?
The commissioners would get it next. I mean, I, we can revise and come back to you, or we can go right to the commissioners with revisions. I mean, you can suggest revisions, and I can, you know, you can say recommended approval subject to, you know, changing it into a standalone rather than a zoning ordinance. But...
Let me ask our staff first. Is, when the staff reviewed this, is there any revisions that came to mind or is this something that you worked with Kevin on and with our counsel and...
This is a product of our zoning officer and our solicitor. So I, other than reviewing it from, from a non-zoning standpoint, I don't have any comments on it. Trish, do we have any emails on this?
No. No, no public comment.
Thank you.
Comments from the members of the, of the commission? I must say, I don't really see anything wrong with this. I think it's a great idea, as a matter of fact. They, I mean, things have changed in the last 10 or 15 years. I mean, nobody had generators except for, you know, some businesses and some hospitals and nursing homes and so on. But now, from the standpoint of residential generators, they're growing up like mushrooms around the place, and so it's fine. I think they should be regulated. This is, this is good.
So I have one question about the test cycles. So all the generators around me go off once a week. But if you look at the, some of the national rules and regs, a lot of them call for once a month, and they, and Generac, which makes a lot of generators, actually, they refer in their, in their, in their booklets and instruction manuals that other companies test once a month, but they, they, they recommend once a week. So I don't know. I mean, it just seems like if we, if we, once a month would be better than once a week if it's, if it's safe. I don't know enough about generators to go any further than that with that one.
I think they try and get around that by, by putting it on the manufacturer's specifications.
Right.
I, I don't know that we're in a position to answer that question because depending on the size of the generator, because residential generators can vary in terms of their size, maybe the testing regimen has got to be once a week with some of them and others, once a month. I just, I don't know that we should endeavor to answer that.
Okay.
The one thing that might be missing here, but maybe it's picked up someplace else in our ordinances, is the sound that generators make. That's the one thing. I mean, some of the generators have silencers. I think the big industrial ones are hooked up to... Just, I've heard generators, the old gas-fired generators, you know, the kind you can buy at Home Depot and hook up a little bit. I suppose I've heard those are kind of noisy. I don't know how some of these, some of these residential generators, I suppose, are somewhat noisy.
Can't hear you, John.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did the audio go off?
Yeah, I think it was...
Okay. So I don't know. I just had that one question. I don't know that this ordinance is the right place to, is the right place in which to put it, but it's something that I would think we ought to consider would be noise levels, especially where the side yard, setback in the side yard requirements can be, you know, can be small in certain places.
So just, if I go back one to Matt's question, "Testing or maintenance cycles of emergency generators shall be in accordance with manufacturer's specifications and for only a short duration between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., day through Friday." To Matt's question.
All right.
And regarding John's question on the sound, there was some discussion about whether we wanted to get into putting a decibel level on the sound on the property lines, but that's probably more appropriate for a noise ordinance, which I know has been bandied about before. But the, we do have a provision in here for requiring that all noise-limiting, let me see what the exact language we use.
It's under C. I saw it there, and I realized that, again, it's almost impossible to try and dictate a decibel level, which manufacturers may not be able to achieve or can only achieve with some outrageous cost to the already outrageous cost of some of these generators. So perhaps that's something that's, might be a trial on earth thing, and maybe this, the, our noise ordinance may have to be tweaked. So far, I don't think, I mean, the first people who would learn if it's a problem would be our staff members with, with residents calling up and complaining about the noise from these generators. Apparently, it's apparently not happening. So I, maybe we should just leave Walnoff alone and not think about that or stir that up right now.
And I, when I spoke with Kevin about that provision, he just said, basically, he added that all standard noise-reducing equipment. That language came from, I guess there are people who remove maybe like dampers or insulation from their generator that is, you know, cheap and meant by the manufacturer to prevent that outrageous noise across the property line, and for whatever reason, people are aftermarket kind of manipulating it.
Some real motorheads that want to put glass packs on their generators, you know?
Right. So, and that's, I mean, I can't imagine that happening. I can't imagine doing it, but that's why it's there.
Can I go back to the question? What is it you're asking us to do as a planning commission?
So this would be to recommend approval, recommend adoption of this ordinance. I think, given John Rice's review letter, it would be subject to this being moved into the, a standalone ordinance as opposed to a zoning ordinance, which I think addresses almost all of the concerns that John raised.
So are we, are you waiting for a motion from us or...
I think, I think we're at the point now, unless, unless there's any members of the commission who feel that this is, this, we shouldn't be recommending approval of this ordinance.
And I think it's important to note what Will said. So if you read John Rice's memo, he talks about clarify when generators can be used, define the term all standard noise-reducing equipment, and things like that. So if you want to make it a recommendation with none, some, or all of John's recommendations, that's fine, too, however you wish to do it.
I think if you move this into a standalone ordinance that addresses, in John's memo, item one, which is for non-conforming lots, item two, which is the administrative waiver process, item four, which was meant to address like hospitals or nursing homes that might need variance relief, again, they'd be going through the administrative process. So it addresses one, two, four, and six is already addressed. Kevin's already made that change. So, you know, the only items left on John's review letter after moving out of the zoning code is, are three and five. And we've discussed them. I just don't know if there's any, I don't think there's any recommended changes. I think it's drafted about as clean as it can be with respect to those provisions.
Well, it seems to me that we're being asked to, then we're being asked whether or not we approve this proposed ordinance as a standalone ordinance governing the installation and use of emergency generators. Is that pretty much...
Yeah.
... what it boils down to?
I think that's right.
Okay.
I'd like to make a proposal that we approve this as a standalone ordinance.
Second.
All approved? I mean, all in favor?
All in.
Okay, it looks like that's done unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, and I think we don't have any public comment on that issue. We have received nothing.
That is correct.
Started on that? Okay. So that leaves us with any old business that we may have? I don't think there is any old business. And any new business? Is there any old business? I don't want to cut anybody off. Any new business?
The Planning Commission will be very busy. We've got a flutter of land development applications, so we'll be requiring all your expertise.
All right. All right. Keeps us off the streets and out of trouble. Great.
It'll be a long, it'll, it's going to be a long night next month.
Okay, good. You shouldn't tell anybody ahead of time. I mean, that's, people might decide to...
I'm planning.
Pandemic or no pandemic, people may decide to go on vacation, long vacations. All right, very good. I guess we are adjourned.
All right.
All right, have a good night, guys.
Good night, everyone.
Same to everybody.